Hello everybody, this is Joe from Prep Agent. If you could hear me, let me know what city you're in and we will begin. Remember, you tell me what city you're in is my key to know that everybody can hear me and the audio is working because you're answering a question. It also gives us an idea of where everybody's at and maybe even you guys could form some study groups. If you're in the same area, I hope you guys had a nice Christmas if that's what you celebrate. I know we got New Years coming up, so now we're gonna see all those year in review videos. Of things that happened the past year. Well, now we're changing over 2020, they're gonna do all those videos of things that happened the last 10 years and then 2010s. Those year interviews. I know they're like annoying, but how many of you guys watch those? You guys watch those? I know I watch those. Alright. So... We are ready to do property ownership. Okay, so first of all, what is real property? What is real property? Who knows? What is real property? Who could tell me what is real property? What do you guys think? Okay, Brett says immovable. Okay, excuse my dogs, guys. They're gonna bark for like one minute. Okay, so we got immovable. What's a better definition of real property? Than immovable? Is all real property immovable? Is all real property immovable? What do you guys think? Not all real property is immovable. The better definition is Brittany Lewis just said, "It runs with the property. It goes with the land. It goes with the land." Can you guys give me an example of real property that is actually movable? Can you guys give me an example of real property that is actually movable? What do you guys think? An example of real property is actually movable. A pool covering is a good one. So then you see that, oh, not a dentist chair. A dentist chair is personal property. Whoever wrote that. Okay, then you see this definition, "Personal property to anything that's not real." I hate that definition, but you see it a lot in your textbooks. It's like saying hot is anything that's not cold. It's kind of annoying, right guys? Well, Murphy's bed. I love those. Okay, so next you have personal property. So what is personal property? What is personal property? What do you guys think? What is personal property? So if real property is anything that goes with the real estate, personal property would be anything that goes with the person. Another word for personal property would be chattel real. We like to say chattel, cattle, cows, move. It's movable. I know that sounds ridiculous. You guys are like, "Come on, what am I, five?" I know it sounds odd, but when you take your exam and you're sitting there and you're going, "Chattel, cu- cu- move," you're gonna be like, "Oh, that guy was so smart. Awesome." Okay, chattel real, movable. Okay, good job everybody. So examples of personal property would be what? So personal property goes with the person. Real property goes with the real estate. Okay, so examples would be like a ball that you have in your house, your shoes, anything that goes with you. Ruthology Fitness says, "Why would a lease, it is real property, a lease would actually be personal property because it's a contract with a person, not with the property itself." What is it called when personal property becomes part of the real property? What do you guys think? So what's that process called? So that process is called annexation. When you take it away, it's called accession. When something's annexed to the property, it's attached to it. And when you do that, you've created a fixture. A fixture. How many guys heard that word annexation before? Gotta know that. Okay, fixture is the actual what it is. So you wanna think of it this way, fixtures like the noun. Annexation would be like the verb. Does that make sense? For everybody who did well in elementary school, nouns and verbs. So the noun would be fixture. Annexation would be like the verb. Good luck Brett Walters taking his test today. My force is with you like Obi-Wan Kenobi, over your shoulder. Well, I heard the new Star Wars was terrible. Okay, so that's annexation. So a fixture is something that was incorporated into the land. Everybody write that down. Fixtures incorporated into the land. Fixtures were incorporated into the land. Okay, can you guys write that down for me please? A fixture is incorporated into the land. Now, there is that test for something was a fixture. What is the test for a fixture? What do you guys think? What is a test for a fixture? So a lot of you guys are writing Maria. What does that mean? What does Maria mean? Maria stands for Method Adaptability Relationship Intention and Agreement. Method Adaptability Relationship Intention and Agreement. Now I noticed we have a good amount of people on the chat. That's because this is a public webinar. The week of Christmas, we decided to make both the webinars public, the Monday and Friday one. But for those of you guys who are not signed up with Prep Agent yet, it's part of our premium package. When you do have that premium package, what that means is you go to the webinars five days a week and you get a recorded version of the webinars accessible to you and the chat is a lot smaller. It's not as many people. Okay, so everybody who is not a premium member, in case you're wondering, you get a recorded session five days a week and, um, what else did I just say? I just totally blanked on it. Recorded session, five days a week. Oh, and the chat's smaller. Okay, moving right along. So we talked about a fixture. Okay, something's incorporated into land. So a tree, is a tree real or personal property? What do you guys think? Is a tree real or personal property? Is a tree real or personal property? Real. You cut the tree down, real or personal property? You cut that tree down, is it real or personal property? Okay, it's personal. Is now personal. You take the wood and you create a fence. You put those nice like picket fences outside of your property. Is it real or personal now? Is it real or personal? Okay, now it is real. It is real. And you take the fence and you kick it over because you don't like it anymore. Is it real or personal? Okay, it is personal. And we just went over that real property become personal property, personal property can be real property, which is a question that comes up in a lot of people's exams. So when you think about this tree example, it could really help you get that right on your exam. Okay, moving right along. Let's do a question. When a company furnishes materials for the construction of a house and the company is not paid, it may file A, A, lease pendant, B, mechanic's lien, C, default judgment, or D, deficiency judgment. You guys heard that somebody's trying to call me? Wow. This new microphone is really kicking butt. Okay, the answer is B, mechanic's lien. Do I sound super good? Is this microphone working? What do you guys think? So excited about this new microphone. I can't believe you guys heard my phone ringing. Okay, so mechanic's lien. So what is a mechanic's lien? In case you're wondering what microphone I'm using, for you guys who uses, I'm using, um, a Yeti Blue microphone with a little sound protector. So when I use like peas and stuff, it doesn't come off that weird. Okay, it's a Blue Yeti microphone. You get them on Amazon. Alright, so mechanic's lien is when you owe somebody money for doing labor and construction. Is a mechanic's lien a specific lien or a general lien? Oh, congratulations MD. Okay, so is a mechanic's lien a general lien or a specific lien? It's a specific lien. What does that mean that it's a specific lien? So we learned that liens mean that you owe money, right guys? They are a monetary encumbrance. I want you guys to remember that. Liens are monetary encumbrances. So what does it mean by a specific lien? So specifically means if you don't pay it, they can only take one thing. Specifically speaking, your property. They can only take your property. That's what it means that it's a specific lien, as opposed to a general lien where they could take all your property. Can you guys give me an example of a general lien? Give me an example of a general lien. I'll give you a hint. They're on the board. So a general lien means they can take all your properties such to the case when you lose a court case in a judgment. So a judgment lien says on the board says judgment, they'll come after anything and everything you got to pay it back. Some of you guys mentioned taxes. Be careful with that. And I see some of you guys were aware of this when you wrote it. Income tax is a general lien. Property tax is a specific lien. Everybody got that? Everybody write that down. General lien is income tax. Specifically, property tax. Be careful with that. You don't wanna get that mixed up because a lot of times people just write taxes and it really depends on the type of tax. Everybody got it? Right, got it if you understood that. Okay, general real estate property taxes levied for the operation of the government are called, A, special assessment taxes, B, ad valorem taxes, C, improvement taxes, or D, special taxes. And the answer is ad valorem. Ad valorem is Latin for what? What do you guys think ad valorem is Latin for? Ad valorem is Latin for according to value, according to value. So a lot of you guys circled special assessment tax. Just so you know, that's more for like curbs, streets, more like local things that you know the public uses to improve the area. Who is usually responsible for the providing of streets, utilities, sidewalks, and curves in a new subdivision? The answer is, C, the builder developer. In case you guys were wondering, um, I get this question this time. Can you print it? You can print it. It's in the top right corner there. You see the word print? All this is printable. Let me just move this over so you could see that. Okay, you see it in the top right? You could print it over there if you want. Just hit print practice exams and it prints everything for you. In case you guys wanna take it home or something. Now, just so we're clear, we had somebody last time I explained that, they got very angry because they said they kept clicking that and they couldn't print it and we realized later they were clicking on the YouTube screen, not in their account. Um, so just so we're clear, uh, you don't click on the YouTube video to print it. Because that person said, "I said I keep clicking print and it stops the screen. I don't understand. How do I print it? It just stops the screen. I don't get it." And we had to tell them, "What? It took us a while to understand." Am I ridiculous? I thought that was obvious that you have to actually log in to do it. But they got very mad at Adrian and I because we didn't understand what they were talking about. Is that one of those questions where you're just like, "Really, really? Come on." Alright, here we go. You guys will be surprised some of the stuff we get. For the most part, everybody's pretty awesome who we deal with. And even the people who ask bad questions are super nice people. Everybody's been great. But every once in a while, we get a question where Adrian and I have to look at each other and be like, "Huh?" Then we call Arthur and say, "Arthur, really?" And Arthur goes, "Hmm." Okay, here we go. A married couple owns a farm together with a writer's survivorship. Their ownership is most likely, A, a tenancy in common, B, a tenancy by entirety, C, severalty ownership, or D, community property. The answer is B, tenancy by entirety. Now, just so you guys know, when you're talking about marriage, it could get tricky state per state. I'm probably gonna take this out of our national questions and allocate this different areas. So I will say, be sure to do research for your state when they're talking about marriage because different ones have different rules. Either way, we know it can't be severalty ownership. Why? If you guys got confused on this one, I get it, but there's no reason anybody should have circled severalty ownership. Why? What is severalty ownership? What does that mean? It means there's only one person. So you could argue if things could be joint tenancy, tenancy in common, tenancy by entirety, but if there's only, if there's more than one person, it can't be severalty. An easement differs from a license in that a license, A, must be created by written instrument, B, may be assigned, C, is of indefinite duration, or D, may be revoked. What do you guys think? The answer is D, may be revoked. Okay, and just so you guys know, when you see the word highlighted, you just click on the word and it gives you the definition. That's why those words were highlighted. In case some of you guys are wondering why certain words were highlighted. It's a really nice feature Arthur built in our system where if you could click on a word, you could see the definition. Obviously, you don't have to click on it, but it's there if you want. The process by which the government can acquire ownership of private land for public use is, A, doctrine of prior appropriation, B, adverse possession, C, as cheat, D, condemnation. Yes, that's correct, Sine. Do not click on the screen, on the YouTube screen. Brandy says, "I try not to use if it is helpful." That's a good point, Brandy. You generally would want to try and answer without clicking on it, but it's there as an option, especially if you're in those early stages of studying. As you've been studying a little longer, you probably don't want to use it as much, but in those early stages, it's definitely a good idea to kind of click it. Okay, the answer is condemnation. The process by which the government can acquire ownership of private land for public use is condemnation. What is the right the government has in order to execute condemnation? What right do they possess that gives them the ability to execute condemnation? What is the right? So condemnation is the process. What's the name of the right? The name is eminent domain. An eminent domain is one of the four government powers. What are the other three? So eminent domain is the right, condemnation is the process. What are the other three rights of the government? So what are these rights that an individual could never have? Okay, I see a lot of people writing Pete, but Pete's not gonna be on your exam. So what, what does Pete stand for? And what it stands for is police power, eminent domain, taxation, and as cheat. Police power, eminent domain, taxation, and as cheat. And I'll say it one more time because this is important. Police power, eminent domain, taxation, and as cheat. So everybody got that? Police power, eminent domain, taxation, and as cheat. What is the fundamental difference between police power and eminent domain? What is the fundamental difference between police power and eminent domain? So police power, they tell you how to use the property. An eminent domain, they could take it away from you. That's the basic difference. Some of you are writing compensation and that's a good point. These eminent domain, they take the property away from you, so they give you money for it. Whereas police power, they're not gonna give you money for it because they're not taking the property away from you. Has everybody got that? So that's the big difference between police power and eminent domain. As cheat is when the government takes their properties, there's no will or no heirs. When you die intestate, you might say. And obviously taxation is just when they wanna get money from you. An easement appurtenant, A, cannot be terminated, B, may be terminated by the dominant tenement, C, will be terminated if abandoned by the servient tenement, C, may be terminated by the servient tenement. What do you guys think? The answer is, B, may be terminated by the dominant tenement. So first off, what is an easement? What is an easement? What do you guys think? What is an easement? What is an easement? An easement is the right to cross another's land. Easement's the right to cross somebody's land. Okay, and the one crossing is the dominant and the one being crossed is the servient. Can't be terminated by the servient because they're being burdened. They would terminate it right from the start. It's the dominant that has that right. What type of easement has no dominant tenement? What type of easement has no dominant tenement? What do you guys think? What type of easement has no dominant tenement? An easement engrossed. That's for things like utility companies and things of that nature. So they're not trying to get to another property. That's the big point. They're crossing your property, but they're not trying to get to another. Can't get this song out of my head. Who knows that song? Okay. Exposure to lead can cause what kind of bodily damage? A, lead can cause damage to the blood. B, lead could cause damage to kidneys, brain, and blood. C, lead can cause damage to the kidneys. D, lead can cause damage to the brain. Uh, Ruthology knows what song I'm talking about. Comma. It's called comma. You guys can look it up if you want. People in Latin America love it. Okay, the answer is, B. How many guys circled that just because it's the longest answer? Alright, Dan sold his land which had an easement appertained for the road. The deed which the buyer received contained an adequate description of the land, but made no reference to the easement. The buyer, A, takes title to property which is landlocked, B, loses the easement to the servient tenement, C, has the same rights to the easement as the seller did, or D, has a clouded title. And the answer is, has the same rights as the easement as the seller did. This is one of those that runs with the land. It's an easement appurtenant, so it's basically part of the property. So therefore, when you buy the property, you have all the rights that come with the property, the full bundle of rights, which in this case includes an easement. Do you have any first timers here? Where's the first timers? Write how many webinars you've attended in the chat. Let's see how many webinars you guys have all come to. One, two, three, thirty-two, eighty-six, a hundred and five, one thousand. Some of you guys have come to enough webinars where if you see me, it feels like you know me. You're like, "Hey Joe, what's up?" I'm like, "Hey, random person at Starbucks line who's totally talking to me like we're friends." But if you do that, I'll totally act like you're my friend. I'll give you a high five, fist bump, all the good stuff. Oh, a lot of first timers. Well, welcome all the first timers. Hopefully in the new year, you'll be attending a lot more. Okay, here we go. Next question. Oh, we're family. All the following are All the following are true of the government's police power except, A, set private controls in certain subdivisions on the types of floor plans, fencing, and house colors. B, it is used to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the community. C, takes private land if the public will benefit from the taking. Or D, set land use policy under the authority of the state. Congratulations, Billy Washington. I'm passing. Very happy for you. Your new year is gonna be bright and prosperous. Okay, and the answer is Set private controls on subdivision on the types of floor plans, fencing, and house colors. The type of easement granting a right of way for utilities, company power lines is in, A, easement by prescription, B, easement engrossed, C, appurtenance easement, or D, easement by necessity. So Brandy said, anyone who's passed tips would greatly be appreciated. So Brandy, um, recently, we've been putting up a lot of interviews with people who just passed. If you look at the YouTube channel, I think it's under study tips. But I don't know if you guys seen those. I do a lot of interviews with people who've just passed, of which you guys could be one of those people as well after you pass. Maybe Adrian has an example of one he could put a link to in the chat if, if it's accessible. Okay, and this we went over the easement engrossed. Remember, we said this type of easement does not have a dominant tenement. Okay, it does not have a dominant tenement. Because they're not trying to go to another property. It's like a utility company being example. By the way, I also have some of those videos on our Instagram account as well. Okay. Oh, Adrian has put up one, I think with Carrie Dunn. Alright, which of the following is not an example of governmental powers? A, eminent domain, B, taxation, C, declaration, D, police power? Oh, great Brandy. So you've seen them. Awesome. Okay, which of the following is not an example of government power? And the answer is C, declaration. There's no D in Pete. It's police power, eminent domain, taxation, and as cheat. So when they say, why is it, the answer is D, like, I don't know. I just know how to spell Pete and there's no D in Pete, so I'm circling that. Pass. Awesome. Give me my license. Rock and roll. Rock and roll, oochie coo, rock and roll, choo. A, B, and C are co-owners of real property in joint tenancy. C sells his interest to D and shortly thereafter dies. If C also executed a will leaving all of the property to his sole heir, whom shall we call E, title to the property would vest as, A, A and B is joint tenants together with D as tenants in common, B, A, B, and E as joint tenants, C, A, B, and D is joint tenants in common, or D, A and B is joint tenants together with E as a tenant in common. And the answer is A. A and B is joint tenants together with D as tenants in common. Clarabelle Sanchez says, Joe, I'm about ready to take my exam. Please help. Clarabelle, I think that's what I'm doing now, aren't I? Am I not helping you? I feel like I'm helping you guys. I promise you guys, I got no magic tricks outside of these webinars where if we talk on private, I'm gonna be like, I know I said in the webinar, but really just circle B the whole time. Like, there's no tricks like that. I'm giving you guys the best that I got here. And I know Adrian's doing that as well. We don't have like those little tricks. Okay, so that's it for today, guys. Hope you have a great day. And with that being said, this is Joe from Prep Agent with Adrian on the chat. And I will talk to you guys soon. Alright, have an amazing day. Thanks, everybody. If you guys want a one-on-one session, you just need to hook me up with a Starbucks latte chai, chai Starbucks latte. Okay, bye. Kidding. Kinda sorta. Not really.